I would like to call the June twenty second. Seven thirty two. Please write for the joint. Hi. The United States of America. We need to be very bothered. What we can say. What we need. But I don't have. We're miserable. And what's this for? Let's go ahead and start with the acknowledgements.
So we have a couple of them tonight in a different class. So Tim McCluskey sentenced and acknowledgements for us for athletics. The boys outdoor track and field team play second at the class in state meet. The baseball team won the CCC East title while girls across and golf were CCC co-champions. Joey Keen, I can still admire Luke Stoffer, Grace Kavanaugh, Marina Morales, Thomas Sheen, Cole Ricard, Max Baldwin, and Sophia Cunningham were armed as all-state athletes. In addition to being all-state athletes, list of Meyer and earned academic all-state honors. So congratulations to. Retirees, just to honor some of our retirees coming up this year. Given many, many years of service to the district, Henry Fay, Karen Libby, and Janice Coca. And Henry Bay is from TMS was there when I was a principal. He's done an amazing job for, for many, many years. Karen will be has literally transformed how we do reading intervention in the district. And she's made massive, massive difference here. So has Janice COVID. So they're just absolutely amazing people. We're sorry to see them go, but that's our honorees and retirees. So that culminates our knowledge.
Well, I think we should. And now. Yeah, it's very important. I mean, that is amazing when they've done with our system for so long. Sad to see them go. Wish them joy and the right time.
And they stuck it out, stuck it out through both.
And then that was.
They didn't have a tire. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. Okay, so let's go to the approval of the agenda. I will, I don't think we have anything moving. I think we just essentially just last meeting to this, you know, fingers crossed. Technology is okay this today. So let's move to the approval minutes. I want you to listen to approve the June eighth.
I move that we approved the minutes from June eight. Go ahead. Second.
Any discussion on those, any changes? All those in favor can say aye. Aye. That is unanimous, which I think we'll sit back that over there. Okay. Of participation, so at this time. Um, Dr. Will will have a little clock for the two minutes. Please list your name and your address for the record. And I will call on you guys here or online. You can raise your hand and we will go from there.
Everyone, my name is Alexis LaPorte, thirty nine grade road. I'm here tonight to address the Board of Education Superintendent regarding concerns I brought to you last year. At this time, we're all aware that I was a senior last year and advocated for an off-site prom and an off-site graduation. From March twenty fourth to twenty twenty one, I was retaliated against by the superintendent of schools and several faculty and staff. I came to you to request that you finish the investigation that Attorney Bartlett did not finish. You ignored my request. Instead, you went into executive session and decided that without any knowledge of what occurred, you listened to the lawyers tell you that all I wanted was money and that the investigation would be more than you could afford. Therefore, he decided to protect your superintendent without direct knowledge of their harassment. I entered from paid home public school employees the last three months of my senior year. I then sent all information on my experience and the fact that Attorney Bartlett stopped the investigation when she found evidence of the faculty and staff members who were responsible for letters, emails, and behaviors. You were aware that Attorney Bartlett found that my father was in fact harassed and ultimately forced to resign. However, Attorney Bartlett cited this is not the investigation against the superintendent, high school principal, and several faculty members. You were aware that I was retaliating against several, I several faculty and administrators as a student, yet you all did nothing. You chose to protect these faculty and staff members instead of protect students. And there are so much more that I will share with you in person over the next few months. I first of all, want to thank the few of you board members who have personally reached out to apologize to me on the behalf of Dr. Will and other ton of employees who had yet to do so themselves. You apologize for coaches who punished me and sent them rest. Criticizing me for advocating for prom. Those no show that my coach. Great.
Thing this board, you guys did nothing. Doors are. First, the report thirty nine read road. And you were elected to this board program, but instead you've been protecting the superintendent of schools. We have three hundred pieces of evidence and you guys chose not to. And I know what happened behind closed doors because some of you reached out to me and the lawyer jumping up and down saying, hey, we're going to take this all the way to the Supreme Court. So Dr. Will, that's using tax dollar money. We F L I'd how much he spent already for you guys to protect him. And we've got nothing back. She's not even giving us the F L I A. I know the journal employer is here. When you ask for an F O I A, we expect that the money we need to know taxpayer dollars, how much you are spending to protect him. This was left in my husband's mailbox, who was a teacher at the time. This is all because Dr. Willet put in writing and some of you went to him in the very beginning and said, he shouldn't be doing this. You know, when he sent out that correspondence, Dr. Willet, when you said that it's Alexis's fault and she's dividing the school. When in fact, it was you who was dividing the school and blamed an eighteen-year-old. So well done for being a superintendent going after your students. So this is from talent public schools embarrassed faculty and staff to Alexis LaPorte and David. I want to start by saying that I respected you as a colleague. Who do you think you are having the right to go into a senior grade? Your daughter was in the Jeep in front of you, the entitlement you think you have. First off, your family advocates for a prom offsite against Dr. Willet's wishes. Your faculty and staff said it was against Dr. Willet's wishes. How do they know that? Because it was written in the newspaper from the Journal Inquirer. So for three and a half months, Alexis couldn't go into the office because she was being harassed. Had Zenzak said, you can't go in that office, Alexis, you're not welcome. And Mr. Coleman said, I'm going to investigate what's going on in the school, but he didn't. And during Attorney Bartlett's investigation, he said, you know what? I didn't investigate. I know I'm the principal of the high school, but I didn't, and I don't know why. You guys didn't protect her. You didn't protect your students. So that's a problem. But I'm sorry. Yeah, I know you're sorry, but we're going to keep coming back here and we're going to present evidence that people were misusing their public office and mistruth, you've been mistruths that happened here. You didn't tell the truth. We're going to tell the truth and I hope the Journal Inquirer is going to take this on because I would love for you to be able to print some of the stuff that you guys weren't courageous enough to save students. You're interested in adults, not students. And when this happens to your child in this district, that's a problem.
Thank you very much. Um, I would just. It is a legal matter, so.
We would, it's a legal matter. You guys have already talked to me, but it's F L I I and I appreciate it.
Thank you for all the words. Anyone else at this time? Seeing I will close out the public participation and then we want to correspondence. Jacob.
Like correspondence report for this meeting. We had an email detailing complaints about the school bus fleet, particularly in regards to cleanliness and functionality. And we received another email that was sent to, not only was it the whole board, but it was sent to a core on the board members and included. And it provided information on the bull of cell phones and technology in the classroom.
That's it. Perfect. At this time, I'd like to open it up for points of information. I know we were discussing a couple of things for the summertime, Dr. Willet, the June twenty seventh meeting. Yeah. Um, we are going to be forcing Walt to take his superintendent trip because they have one scheduled for that time. So seeing that he missed the last one due to other circumstances. So I don't, I wanted to kind of get the feel for the board. If they would like to maybe push out because we were supposed to start our board goals and it really should be in person. And if he's not going to be, then we can make that meeting. We could do it virtually, but you guys were here for the, you know, virtual board. Yeah. Goal setting and it really just is not, it doesn't work. It doesn't work. So I kind of wanted to get a feel for you guys to see exactly how you felt in terms of if we just move next to like take the ones that we have and just add one at the end of that. And how, because I really want to do.
So we can take Mr. Crusoe and have him come just instead of doing the first of the three that night, we push him.
Put all three.
You know, so we just kind of pack on one.
That way.
Because like I said, I mean, we could do it virtually and still have our, our meeting and run it with him. But I just don't want to do the board polls like that in that setting. I feel like the board goal really needs to be in person so we can just have those conversations because it really is different when we're online versus in here. So those were my thoughts.
I think it's fine.
Yeah. Great idea. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Perfect. So you got that. I think we do better as a group. We do really well and again in person.
Well, yeah, it does work better.
Yeah. So it will move next to go. The board. Anyone else want to have?
After that, but just, you know, coming from that eighth grade. Certainly, we just, just came to look around at all, but all the students and parents and just the joy on their faces. And then hearing of these three teachers that are, that are retiring just really made, you know, it was touching.
Nature.
It really does. And to know that, you know, these three teachers, all the stuff they've been through these past couple of years and they helped us through it and then decided to go to the next level. It was, I just, I want to add what we were saying earlier, just my heartfelt appreciation that, you know, it's because of people like that that we were able to go to this ceremony earlier. Appreciate it.
I'm really sorry I'm going to miss the faceable graduation.
Sophia will be on the big screen.
Well, yeah, I will. It's looking like it because Ashley's not going to be there. Be standing next to Dr. Willie.
Jumbotron experience.
Just take one of those old school projection.
I have an actual projector.
Again, though, it was, but it's not great quality. You know, I do think everybody that will be at the high school graduation on May, I'm sorry. Okay, I have wedding stuff to do. Clear fish. I thought there was something else that we were going to discuss.
That was the big one.
Yeah.
Just to figure out which.
These. I mean, this is the guys, the last day of school here.
Congrats on completing your school year to everybody. That's it. That's really it.
No small endeavor.
No. Especially, and I think the two officers who did speak at that promotion ceremony put it perfectly. And, and you know, the moral of the story, I mean, look what we just accomplished in these, in the three years that we just went through and still going through. And so now as they enter high school, we're still facing challenges. And so it's just really, that was really cool. I echo what Tony just said. That was a really cool experience and Bravo to the officers who just spoke. That was.
I mean, that's. Positive to this job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just really interesting to hear from their perspective about how proud they were about making through pandemic. You know, like it's like, even though it still feels like we're in it to a certain degree, like it feels like it's over. So then to bring that back up, they did a really good job in that. It made me remember what it was like, March thirteenth, when all of a sudden there was. We were supposed to be, we were just going to leave for Disney the next day.
The warnings were, you know, we opened up as soon as we said, we did what we said, you know, we tried to follow guidelines and that's what we did.
But Jay make the solid point. I'm excited. It's sitting in there, listening to the speech and then I just kept thinking, you know, we gotta, we gotta tell Mr. Poland, you know, this group of amazing kids coming out of the middle school are about to energize the high school. And it got me thinking that, you know, a few years down the line, we've got those kids out of T I S that were going through this and are about to make the middle school amazing, they're about to make the high school amazing. And I think we've got, you know, a good decade of just power and these new and invigorated children work their way through the symptoms. And it's going to be amazing to see.
That brings me up to something else that possibly we should announce today. We do have new student reps. And I will let Sophia be the one.
So my daughter Mira said that she was going to run her student rep. And I said, no way, you're not going to be a senior next year and you're totally punking me. And she did and she got it. Thank you, along with Ms. McCown, who was the.
The Buzz Box.
The Buzz Factory. Another sophomore. They ran together.
Are they planning on doing it? Do you think back to back years, junior?
Well, there's. So we got sophomore.
So have a couple of years.
That's all. That's. Congratulations. So those are new. You know, I think we'll have to see if the pound can show us some more inventions.
Well, they, they probably told me that they're now on the board of.
I'll give them my comfy chair. Tell them they got to hear her.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we might have to. I work. We're already short.
Yeah, there is a busy.
One chair. So it's like the, the chair that goes.
The usual chairs.
Um, okay, so close that off. And we don't have student representative report, but that was a good leadway into that. Those are new reps.
Quick question on, are Emily and Natalie done?
Yeah. Yeah. That's what the little gift. Oh, you weren't hearing that part. We.
We gave her. Sweatshirts for their conferences.
Got you guys. Well, congratulations.
Talking to the.
To both of you. Yes, congratulations to both of you. You both have worked very hard. Congrats. There you go. There you go.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report. So the monthly financial.
All right. So for those of you at home, I am, I'm going to try to blow this up a bit so you can see it. As you're aware, in the first board meeting of each month, we do do our monthly financial report and go through some highlights. And then of course, questions and we need to, and I can come back with answers. Salaries code one ten are currently, and again, now keep in mind, this is as of the close of May. We are twenty-two days after that at this point. So this is not going to reflect where exactly we are right now. Okay, so this is where we were at the close of May and some of the highlights for May. So salaries code one ten were under budget about two thirty-seven due to the transfer. You know, we've got grants, things like that. This is now, you know, this is actually the, it is much lower now. Substitute one twenty is available balance of twenty-seven under budget. With the one month remaining at that point in time, went down about forty-five thousand from previous month. Overtime expenses, one thirty, generally those can't be encumbered. They were under budget at the time of fourteen thousand, down by ten thousand from previous month. Their expect much lower at this point. Stipends at that time, at the end of May, were currently over budget for twenty-one. Like prior years, all budgeted stipends are encumbered for the year. P T P or paid to play funds, pay to participate funds are not, you know, always been fully collected. And so those do get collected all throughout the year, but we're getting close to the end of that process. As you'll see, as we tie it up at the end of June. Health insurance severance and point benefits codes in one ninety, two hundred to ten are collectively a one sixty-eight. Under that moment in time, teachers didn't totally come forward to announce retirement. So as you noticed, you do have three. And the severance line has a favorable balance ninety-one, but that's probably going to be adapted a bit now as we get to the end of June. Newly implied, the employees, FICA, Medicare, Social Security code two twenty. You know, those had an available balance of fifty-six. But again, as we get to the end of the year, here, you'll notice that going right about up to the line. Retirement reimbursement courses and unemployment, those are codes two forty-two, fifty-two, sixty, or collectively eighty-five thousand under budget at the end of May. Benefits consultants, workers' comp balances, that's two seventy-three, ten are both under budget, nineteen thousand, that is at the end of May. Code three twenty professional services are over budgeted by two thirty-seven due to special education needs on occupational therapy, physical therapy, audiological services, psychological services, speech, behavioral consultation services and evaluations. Those type of things have impacted that line. Audit, technology services, legal, that's code three forty-three, fifty, are collectively under budgeted by about seven thousand at the end of the day. They're coming out to the line as, as you'll see in June. Repair, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment, technical, those are lines four twenty-four thirty will continue to be spent. These lines are currently under by thirty-three as of the end of May, but they're down now to the line of zero. Transportation, as we've been talking about, is over budgeted in May by fifty-six thousand. Excess costed to backfill that line, they kind of pushed back some of the balance in there. We have had a special education services are newly needed. So the old bridge is going to continue to impact that line. Special education tuitions five sixty are over budgeted by two ninety-seven. As, as we talked about, you know, there were just some COVID related and other things that didn't impact the district. Energy, one point four million was transferred to the U C P account at the beginning of the year, which we talked about. It's universal internal service fund that you know, I've kind of talked about finance facilities, but I could do a larger report on that sometime if you want. Textbooks six forty are not fully covered at the end of May, but you'll notice that the balance is pretty low on there. So it's gone down and will go down by about seventeen thousand more to get to the end of the year. Instructional supplies, equipment miscellaneous, general, which is line six hundred, six ten, six ninety, seven thirty are collectively over by thirty-eight. Each school building are continuing to work through their balances as we get to the end of the year. So there is a dramatic difference between then and now. I'm going to give a conjecture that we're probably in the zone of about thirteen thousand dollars. You have about eight fiscal days left. And so this is the time of the year where you're opening up your conferences, figuring out what's left and so on. But we're going to be much closer to the line than we were in the past couple of years. But keep in mind, the past couple of years were anomalies. There was state budget crisis years ago. So this is actually, if you look at our long track record, the broad track record outside of those four anomaly years, you're pretty much right about kind of thing we're doing now. We're going to be probably between zero and a hundred thousand, I guess, is somewhere in the thirteen thousand, sixty thousand zone, which is where we used. Coming back to normal. Right.
So thirteen thousand, so you're saying we could have as little as thirteen thousand dollars left, but maybe on the high end about as much as sixty.
Yeah, I'm going to put it zero to one hundred, but today it was thirteen.
Okay.
And you know, these, the changes every day as the ones come in and pay out. But we are, we are going to be between zero and a hundred thousand, probably more like.
As long as we're not over, that's good. But I just thought that was a bit closer to the line that I think we talked about in F S C. So.
Well, and that's today's balance. That's today's, because you know, then what happens is your on income becomes back up. Yeah. Is there maybe some lines here we're not fully spending? So that's the, that's the snapshot.
Okay. Thank you. I got them all out of the way in F S C.
Okay. Let's move on to number two, field trip report.
Okay. So in accordance with our Board of Education policy, at the end of the year, I give you a report on field trips that were, were not field trips. So we had the Bentley and Bryant tour field trip. That was done by Todd, Tom Business Academy students. We had Carnegie Hall, which was the chamber choir, and they were invited and performed. Atlanta, Georgia, the Deca National Competition. And many of you saw that posted, a lot of the things, they were also recognized here recently. Boston, Massachusetts, also Deca was the regional conference and they did Austin in the competition. And you noticed they came to the board meeting the other night and we were giving them accolades. Radio City, New York City, the students went to see a Broadway production in the Washington DC trip for the TMS students. So that's, that encompasses the overnighters. That's pretty much what we do at the end of the year is just kind of over here with it.
Do you know, or maybe something you can put on the desk or about how many students were ever taken advantage of?
I can put that on there.
I think that would be interesting inspiration.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a few.
Well, there's, there's also caveats to each one, like the Deca one, for example. I'm just saying this because I, I know, but you have to sort of make it to national. So not everybody, or, or you can be an officer and go as an officer. And so there's different ways to go, but versus other field trips where, you know, like the chorus field trip, where as long as you're in course, you perform in eighth grade or seventh grade, I forget which, whichever it is. Everybody in that chorus is going to Six Flags at the end of the year or, or, or eighth grade is going to Lake Como. And so that would be interesting as well as specifying, you know, what type of filter that was, an extracurricular or.
Man, you just want to add on to his.
No, no, but you know, with, with Tony suggesting of, of, you know, sort of tracking how many students were able to take advantage of them. I think it's important that we understand how they took advantage of them, you know?
I mean, I could give you the projectives right now that I can give the finals later. I do have the projectives at the time of their application.
Gotcha.
It'll take me a minute. So the, the New York City field trip with May Kirwin was forty-five kids that was attending that show in New York City. That was about forty-five. And as, as, you know, as Mr. Register pointed out, some of them are because they won a competition. So that group will be smaller. Bentley University, that was projected to be twenty students. So it was probably around that seventy-two. The May Washington DC trip, I believe, was about a hundred and sixty kids. Most of the class, which is about the same size as we usually have on that one. Deca, Atlanta was projected as about twenty kids. Carnegie Hall. Carnegie Hall was about eleven kids because it was that choir, I think. And Deca, Boston was, Deca, Boston was twelve. The biggest one was Washington, it was about one fifty and then it kind of went down. Yeah. And that's during a COVID year. So that's good, you know? And that was following our, you know, followed our COVID plan, policy protocols, that was with all of that.
Okay. And that, like the regional power trip, that's only accessible to chapter officers and whichever state officers are in our, our chapter. So that's only ten to twelve kids each year going in November to that regional power trip. And so, yeah, that's just, I, I didn't mean to go down there. You know, rabbit hole of that stuff. But yeah, there are different reasons as to why they're attending this.
And you're right, make no mistake, I'm not asking because I want to say, you know, only X percent got things. I'm more looking at, you know, as we put these together, what, what kind of numbers are we talking? For whatever reason, are we talking three or four bus full? Are we talking small groups going over? Just that overall trend.
You know, these are, these are the overnighters. Yeah. So that's the one that comes to you is the overnighters. So we have lots of trips that are just day trips. A lot of kids went to say like Connecticut Legislation Building, Bush Knolls, Boston. Yeah. Boston, exactly. Then we're day trips. So there's a lot of them that go on, but you, you, the policy has us doing the overnighters.
Well, thank you for that inspiration. That's great for the students out there going on these adventures. It really is, you know? It's all permanent. You know? I mean, one of those Deca students, she went international. I mean, it's amazing. So you know, I don't know if she got, she got to go anywhere, but that would be cool.
Always supporting. And there was a Germany trip too, that was cycling and. We're going to go back and go back internationally.
Daughter missed that. It was all signed up.
And then there's the, they do, the, the band will start going back to Virginia Beach and so Disney and all those things.
So be more.
There will be more as you come into next year.
This is a short list. Let's directly speak of.
Like we've gotten much, but the policy has changed. We'll see this before June.
Yeah, the, the policy adaptation will be making that when they come up, when I'll report to you when they're approved within that month. So I'll say, here's the ones I approved this month. So they'll get them on there, just getting all of them at the end.
Okay, um, let's go to I three.
So as you're aware, we do have, you know, the occasional cycle every year where we. So as you're aware, we do have, you know, the occasional cycle, every year where we report up to the board and follow the protocols for obviously surplus equipment. The obviously surplus equipment is reported out here, and then it is handed over to the town, and the town decides what it wants to do with it. So the town can sometimes take certain things and sell them to metal yards and all that kind of thing, this is really what they do with it afterwards, it's in purview of their jurisdiction. Sorry.
Yes.
Oh, well, can he go through all this first? I mean, he just start talking about it, and you're you're like, oh, I got a question.
So I I'll try to be concise. Most of the information is in front of you, so I will not restate all of it, but there are, you know, old Chromebooks, books, language of literature books, common for progress monitor, you know, materials. Furnish pads, hair pads, Scotch glue, cleaner pads, you know, all kinds of things, some of that is not usable at all, but it goes through surplus just because. People don't want to, you know, want to be very transparent about it, old microwaves, old TVs. Projectors that are really old, not working extremely well. We, some of these are so long that we just detached, but you'll notice some of the older Lenovo's, they've been stripped. So if you look at these, we're not handing over ones that are actually in working condition, we've stripped them for every part we can get, and we use them to repair the others. So the stuff you're seeing is either outdated, old, or it's been stripped for its equipment, and it's used to maintain the, you know, the ones we have. In service right now. JET people do a great job of stripping those things down so that, so that we have parts. So there's a pretty long list, and I will not read all of them, but you can see at home, anyone logging in, all that stuff, and then. We have. Oh, this is an extension, see guys, it just. Yeah, it should be off to the right, basically what I said. Yep, so that's that's it, those are up there for you to look at, they're handed over to the town, and then the town decides.
Now, Jacob, what kind of questions do you have?
It was only half joking when I said I had lots of problems with this, I don't I don't have any problems with the list, but I did have a lot of questions. So this one thing I noticed as I was looking at this policy is it hasn't been updated, I think, since like two thousand one. And you can see there's a lot more technology that the district has than it did in two thousand one. And I was just thinking, you know, in terms of getting most bank or buck, does. Have you ever thought about maybe revisiting that so that we might control the salvaging portion of at least the technology, because. I know that Dr. Will was saying there's stricter parts and things, but, you know, I know technology tends to have some precious metals in it, and some other things that might be valuable for scrapping and. Considering that we have like a high replacement cost for technology that doesn't have a very long lifespan, you know. Even if you could get some money back for that, but in some sort of fund to help fund the replacement costs, I don't know if it's.
The question becomes, is the policy technically the monies, whatever would be, well, I guess we're still taking whatever parts are usable, and then getting those scraps to the town, and I guess if the town decides to. Put them into a computer or take them to the scrapyard, then that would be down.
So as a visual, pretend we had a bucket of Kentucky Fried Chicken in front of us, we had our first shot. We hand it over to the board when we're done, I mean, to the town, we've got, we've got a whole lot in those things that are left.
And we can certainly. You know, I think we we can certainly bring it up. We could certainly bring it up, it's been a long, we addressed, anyway. My my personal opinion, though, is I think to Dr. Will's staff's credit, you know, they do take, looking at this list. You know, they're they're taking all the things out of it they can, these Chromebooks, these computers. They weren't a couple of years old, there's not a whole gun to take out of it, sure, no, the copper down. But I think we start to get into some some gray matter that we really have to look at when we start talking about. Trying to recoup funds before we give it to the town. Because it it bumps back into the, you know, ultimately, the town gives us the budget to use. And once we determine that that bucket of Kentucky Fried Chicken is no longer tasty. It's up to them to get rid of it, now, if we're handing it back, or we've done all our use out of it, if we we haven't pulled the drive, we haven't pulled whatever widget in there that we can use. Then we shouldn't be scrapping it.
And keep in mind that the sometimes the model policies from ship and. They're updated only to a certain point themselves, because there's no new relevant information, so the one that I think that's in the ship wins model policy is two thousand five.
Yeah.
So it's still, their model is still.
I think it's boring conversation, so maybe it's a stupid idea, but I just don't know, there's a lot of stuff there that's being disposed, and I'm sure that wasn't. How it was twenty years ago, especially with regards to.
So what you're asking for is another class in the business academy to see.
Further, I don't know, if you can turn on investments of the remaining.
I think it's a brilliant idea, and I really credit you for thinking about that, and why can't we just change the policy that we recoup those monies?
Well, as Mr. Holt said, that is a more complicated endeavor.
And and again, this is a different topic, and there's more that we can look at.
There are related town ordinances, there are some things we can't, but we have to go back.
So we've got to do it, and and I think is, and on this point, but but what Dr. Will at staff is doing. And what he mentioned, you know, before it came on the screen, is doing exactly what you're talking about, I mean, they're going through that computer. Look, find your comb and grabbing everything that we could possibly use before we even scrap. At that point, we're handing it to the town to say to him.
But here's the shell.
It's it's my son's closet.
So, um, being that, maybe we do have six people, so we can actually vote on this tonight, if anybody would like to. Make a motion to move it down to board action as an L one, I don't know how you guys feel, but.
How much do we move this down to board action, L one?
Second.
Any other discussion, all those in favor of moving it down to L one could say aye, and aye, and that is unanimous. So we move the sound, and we will go. Let's move to forty fifty.
So carrying out forty fifty, this is coming up from the policy committee. And policy forty fifty was last updated in twenty twelve. This is actually a full replacement with the with the one that is from Shipman and Goodwin, and it's in consultation with the chief personnel officer. So you'll notice that. The policy itself is really for background checks to shorten it up a bit, employment, student teacher checks. And so there are elements of background checks in the shipment policy that have to do with doing a credit check. School systems don't typically do credit checks as part of our background check process, so that's why I say in consultation with the chief personnel officer. It's pretty much the shipment's model policy taking out the things that do not apply to our schools, such as the. You know, that that credit checks. And that's it in a nutshell, if you scroll down, there's quite a bit of language, but again, it is, it is basically a flat replacement. With the ship and language adjustment of the numbers to match the numbers and letters presented to the report of education tonight for the first read or. Was it second read?
The second.
This is the first read, because we didn't get to it in the last, right, so this is the first read.
So anyone have any questions in terms of this forty fifty, like you said, I think the only thing that was seen off of it was that credit check.
We don't do the credits more.
Maybe, I guess I was curious, because it was full of rewrites, it's just done because of statute changes or reasons behind it?
No, we picked it primarily because, you know, like I said, we're going through the. You know, the the policies that have to be changed because of statute, because of rules, this was one of those that had been checked, and we knew things had changed. Now, Shipman had gone back in their model, looked at statutes, looked at the rules, and changed the verbiage in there. So we brought it into the meeting and took a look, decided it was encompassing enough to just bring over and bring new in and then end it. But ultimately, as Dr. Will had said, other than the credit check, there's nothing, there's no subject that, you know, we're not adding new checks or subtracting checks.
Let's move on to fifty one sixty.
Fundraising at home. Fifty one sixty is very straightforward fundraising activities policy. This one I didn't have to attach a bunch of things, it's basically, if you take a look at the blue highlight, you know, blue or strikeout is the whole taking out, yellow is the additions. This is strictly an update of legal, you'll notice that the the old references to old legal wording and old legal. Part of the code, and this one is updating into the Connecticut Channel statute ten two fifteen. You know, a lot of us were pondering why the main foundation is a nutritional standard, but that's basically. If you think about it, a lot of schools, you know, where they get into it is this. This kind of thing interfaces with what you did last time with the Healthy Foods Initiative. And that's why that that law lies for Healthy Foods and into this, because a lot of fundraising is your, you know, people outside selling candy bars at the gates. Or whatever else, when they can do it, where they can do it, where the money goes, all that. So this is just taking policy from oh seven and updating it to the current language and updating it to the current legal reference, and that's about all that really needed updating.
The thing to remember with with this and with the rest of them is, you know, we've essentially got a two level. We've got our policies that that we said, we've got the regulations that Dr. Will had in the staff, and based upon that policy. So while you're seeing this relatively, we're getting some high level directions that are changing this, updating this, then give Dr. Will and staff. The opportunity to go into those regulations and make adjustments on how we can do this.
Okay.
That's set against this one, very, very.
So we are all set with that, then, let's go ahead and move on to the committee. So who wants to start? Because I don't even, we didn't get to it last time, I have everybody, so, but we don't have everybody here. So, Jacob, why don't you start with, what could you have to provide?
So we had a committee meeting last Wednesday. And we had a couple of interesting discussion points, so number one, there's a new second grade social studies unit that we're working on. All few months ago, we had Making the Difference curriculum block, and. It's just like a unit that doesn't encompass all of second grade social studies, that was part of the year, now another part of the year. Which covers geography, culture, civics, and economics at a second grade level, of course. And so that is another effort to try to align our curriculum with state standards, and. Where we are with that currently is, we reviewed the language that was given to us from the state, but it's not really a formal curriculum, yes, it needs to be developed by. Teachers, which will be working on that over the summer, so hopefully by the August meeting, we'll have something that we can look at that's a little bit more detailed, and send over to the board. The second thing we talked about was technology and cell phones in the classroom, it was more of a general discussion. And that that was a very interesting, productive discussion, so we talked a bit about, you know, the different roles of technology. I'll talk about cell phones first, so Dr. Will had announced that, well, in order to kind of combat. Unauthorized cellphone use and going on social media and stuff like that, that students will have, there'll be drop boxes for students to place their phones in during. The day or during times where it's not appropriate for them to be using it, we can retrieve them between classes or at other times where it might be a useful learning tool. But otherwise, it'll go up in the box to cut down on distraction, and. We generally felt that that was a reasonable step to take, that probably wasn't going to receive too much pushback from students, because I know this would be a touch of a subject, and I know in some districts it hasn't gone very well. Hardly ends up on cell phones. And then we had a general discussion about technology and its different applications being used as a way. To increase productivity and have a support tool, which is important for graduate seniors to know, because if they're going in an office environment, they're probably going to encounter tools like. Google Drive and learn how to use Microsoft Office Suite, yeah, but things to that point. And then also being used as a learning tool and how that plays at the different levels. So, yeah, there's a, I think it's the longest I've talked about this.
I just regarding the cellphone policy, will it look differently, different schools to school? Because, I mean.
Yeah, we have an electronics devices policy, not strictly cellphone laws.
And the electronics devices policy doesn't say anything about having to give up.
Yeah, it's it's like any other distraction, so basically the teacher can decide whether it's used, if it, does it make sense for the class today or not? So if it doesn't make sense for the class today, kids drop it at a slot box in the front of the room, they teach the class, then at the end of the class, they take it out of the slot box. So the teacher makes the determination of whether, you know, this this particular period could use the technology or not, sometimes they will, sometimes they won't. You know, we talked about the Center for Human Technology, it's a really good. Resource and site, talked about social media, talked about how, you know, some of these apps, like the TikTok apps and other apps, they can really distract, they're, you know, and they have a great power Snapchat, Instagram. So they have a place in kids' experience in the world, but, you know, what's happening is, you know, once a kid comes offline, looking at one of those, it takes at least five minutes to revocus attention. And so, you know, they were being drawn off constantly on content, so the teachers then, you know, they they can be very powerful tools. And so the teacher can decide, is this the kind of class where I can have them do this, use it as a resource tool? But maybe that we're doing a lab, and the lab is not a good place to use this one on this particular case, because we're cutting up a few things or something like that, you know. I don't know, we use speedo pigs anymore, COVID kind of knocked off a lot of stuff. We, some of us just dissected those COVID chains that are on, but dogs, and it used to be also worms. But in any case, anyway, so they they, as, you know, it's part of their instructional discussion, and that's how that would play.
And just just to add on to that, oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna add on, just, it it's part of your question, like in the high school, I know. Majority of, I don't I don't want to say majority, but a lot of those teachers do already have something even in class. It's just a matter of whether they enforce the use of it or not, and so I don't know what it's, what it is at the middle school level right now, but.
But I guess, but but we don't, we don't have a policy, we don't have a regulation that says anything about a student must give up their electronic electronics, in fact, quite the opposite. You know, we've got the personal electronics policy, we've got some possible electronic security type policies that are meant to look at that, we've got regulations underneath. None of them approach this, so, you know, let's say I'm Johnny in one of these classes, my teacher tells me to put it in here, and I don't. I haven't violated any policy.
Where you violated is you violated the, because the teacher is the is in charge of the classroom, so it would be insubordinate to the teacher. Just like if in a meeting at your work, somebody said, you know, we're having a meeting here, and you should put your cellphone away, if you said, nope, I'm not, because it's not in our, they could say it's insubordinate to your experience.
But aren't we looking at something different here? If you're saying that, and and forgive me if I'm missing what you said, so you're saying we're going to classroom, and if this is a class where the teacher has not decided cell phone is is going to be used. Then I'm supposed to put my cellphone in this box, bag, cup, whatever it is. If I don't, until I pull it out in class and start to play with it, I haven't created any sort of distraction, I haven't done anything that would interrupt. The the educational process, so I guess what my question, and I don't want to go into the the philosophy behind, you know, whether or not we give up our cell phones, as you guys have done that. But I don't see, I don't see it in policy, I don't see where that would, I'm wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse and creating. Actions before we actually create.
Well, take a look at the high schools, because there's a lot of things that are practically, you know, that that we are educators have to implement as a disciplinary. So the high school has, as a student handbook, and the student, you know, the the staff is empowered through, you know, things to execute and to do that. And the student, you know, the the staff is empowered through, you know, things to execute and to do that, to keep, you know, keep classroom structure, pedagogy going. Shipwind doesn't have a model cellphone policy to my knowledge, and I think that's purposeful. Because it lumps it under a general electronics policy and it leaves it to the educators to determine what's a disruption or not. So like it's to use your scenario. And again, just to, you know, I answer things as best I can with kind of. So not being contrarian, but what would typically happen? Is if somebody came in and said, look, I want you to put down that, you know, insert anything here, like a rubber frog or, you know, or, you know, cellphone. I need you to put it over there. And they say nope, then they're immediately in support, you know, and they can give them a couple of chances, like come on, you know, let's do that, put it over there, da, 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 nope. Okay, I'm gonna give you one more shot at this. I need you to put it over there. This is already disruptive. So that that could be ultimately like a low level sort of already disruptive. And so that's just falls under the general category of insubordination, right?
And again, and two points with what you're saying there. One, I think we have to remember that. Colin Public Schools policies are not simply a copy paste of shipwinds. Their shipping legal references feed into it as well as how the district has the board, how the town feels. The the district should go. My concern is again, that this direction. As far as the cell phones, and we've seen it go across the state as various boards and various towns have decided how they want to handle that. My my concern is that we're making that decision outside of what our policies say we should do. And if our policies are supposed to dictate how we operate, then it needs to be in there before it's in school.
We're probably under instruction. It gives disciplinary, it gives discussions to the educator.
Go ahead and just say that you guys can have this discussion during policy. And we're kind of getting a little bit out behind for Gally Chantier has still has her question that she didn't get answered. So let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and put that on the.
I have a child at both schools, middle school and high school, and I just know that the way in which they handle the cellphone is different. So in the middle school, they, from. How I know it, they're not allowed to have it on their person. They're not supposed to have it on their person throughout the day. So I guess I was more curious, like, was this now changing and were we going to? Because my high schooler does tell me sometimes that they say, oh, you can use like the flashlight on your phone or something like that. So I didn't know if maybe the middle school was going to have some allowance for that.
Well, we're looking at that over the summer. A middle schooler, you know, presumably at the beginning is eleven years old. Where your average high schooler, you know, fourteen, fifteen. So there's developmental difference, prefrontal cortex development difference, attention span difference. So there's the variety of things we take into account when trying to decide what would be permissible. There's a good chance it'll be becoming more in alignment though. They're pretty good. They're good learning tools as long as they aren't becoming distractions. And the problem is there's no, there's no, there's no consistent control.
Right.
So Chromebooks, we can use to maintain content on, block things, all that kind of stuff. But a but a phone could vicariously pop up images, video and things that someone else could find a timeline or someone else could whatever. So they have to be managed in a manner that is in accordance with the kind of tool it is and what capabilities it has. And how much control the district has over the content that can be delivered to that device. So probably what will be happening over the summer is just looking at the developmental needs of the six, you know, sixth grader, seventh graders, grader. Seeing how it matches up with the high school and it'll probably be a little more in alignment than it has been. So there may be some use, but it would be in full.
Yeah, because I was going to say on the flip side, you know, I I understand why the high schoolers have a little bit more. They they can have a little bit more responsibility given to them, you know, being that. There at a time in their lives where, you know, I'm getting texts the middle day. Okay, I'm staying after school day. Okay, I'm doing this day. Like they, there's more fluctuations that require communication, I think, home. With what the high schoolers do. With middle school. So I would, I would hate, although I understand the need, especially when it comes to the social media issues to kind of. Tighten this. I wouldn't want that completely taken away from the high school students.
Well, I think it's as a discretion again on the teacher, which is perfect. You know, again, if you really, as we delve deeper and deeper, which Mr. Murray did a great job of in the meeting, they're kind of leading us down the path of the conversation. You know, like streaks in Instagram, they're they're designed in a manner to capture attention. That's how the market works. It's a market of attention. It's not even a market of dollars. More it's an attention market. So what happens is they're designed to to really have people want to see what's going on and post something every single day. And so you'll find that there's actually literature and research and Facebook did admit it's having a very diverse. Effect on young females at the high school level because it was promoting this like almost desperate need to have to post in this. Unreal version of their lives and which, you know, actually resulting in a lot of kids feeling depressed, angry, anxious, not living up to this perfect thing. And so imagine all of that happening in social studies when you're trying to teach the service. You know, and and they just cannot break themselves away from it sometimes. And that's how it's designed. That's why it's so successful. But that is, that is playing on the lack, lack of develop, development of their prefrontal cortex, their urges are, their atlas behaviors are much more prone to 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 be taken advantage of. At that level. So that's why, you know, you have to do some kind of control. So I think it's. They, you know, the teacher has to look at the content of the class for that day and say, yeah, this would be one I can actually see using the cell phones. And by the way, guys, if you're not opening your Instagrams, you're not opening your whatevers, we're using it to, you know, you're using Safari or whatever your browser is to research new groups. The, you know, nineteen sixty four civil rights bill and we're going to do stations or something like that. And as they walk around, if they see somebody doing it, you know, that's fine. But if they know they're doing something where they need absolute attention and will not have the ability to monitor all of them, then they're going to need to put them in the, you know, put them in the slots. A very easy example of that would be a test. You can't have them have it during tests. In the test, they got all the. So, you know, I really encourage people to look at the Center for Human Technology. Please go there. Please and look at it because it does talk a lot about how we bent, you know, what's technology that's really very useful for education, educating? And the development of human beings. And one of the things that are market driven, attention driven technology, which has not been that great for teenagers. It's been pretty devastating. So we have to be careful.
So my last question. Was going to be, well, I would assume that part of this is also based on, you know, social media bullying and those kinds of situations too, right? So I know that we see that. Can you? I'm just curious, do we see more of it at the high school level than we do at the middle school level? Do we see it both as equal or?
Well, I think what you, what you see is a more sophisticated use of the technology to do things. And they, there's a more sophisticated use of technology to do good things. And then there's a more sophisticated use of the technology to do things that are not as, you know, not, they're not conspiracy kind of actions. And again, it's about the behavior, not about the child. There's no, no, no bad child, just bad behavior that we have to then try to, you know, try to help them through. But, um, you know, I think what you see at the high school is sophisticated use of technology in everything you see. Even creative use of being cool. At the younger grades, the danger is that they have, you know, an added danger to some extent. Is that really their prefrontal cortex is a limbic system, they're not regulated at that age. So they are more apt to do something really thoughtless. And that means even themselves, like send a picture of themselves or, you know, because they're not right, they're not looking at all the potential cascading risks of this particular action. And so that's the increased danger at the middle school level is that they they have even less regulation. That limbic system and prefrontal cortex even more, you know, out of whack. And that, you know, that's not just me, just that's all the literature. Go, you know, go look at any of the literature on this. It's expansive. And that's why we have to just be mindful of how all of that, you know, how that progresses. It's very different from oh five, from ten, from fifteen year twenty twenty two, very different. So we just have to be mindful. To answer it shortly, you know, it's just they get more creative in high school and they're more careless. You know.
Yeah, cell phones are the big topic here.
Yeah, and they're not really even cell phones anymore, right? These are computers. They're handheld computers, clearly what they are, right?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, these things also came up in our meeting, in our curriculum meeting. And it's, it's not just the cell phones. It's not just the, you know, iPad and this and that. It is the Apple watches and and the smaller things that, you know, teachers can't see. If I get a message on my watch during a test or something saying, hey, the answer to number three is sixty eight point two. Teacher can't see that. This doesn't give off a loud buzz. This doesn't give off, you know, I can put this on mute and it can come into my, my, uh, not, I don't say my phone. Basically, it can come into my watch silent and basically give me everything I need.
So you just told all the students how.
Here's another example of how we have to be careful because if on an SAT, a student having their Apple watch could be. Could be a serious violation of the school's protocols with, say, someone does it to. And if we would be, that would be something we'd have to respond to the college board. It'd be, I forget what they call it, but it's like spoiling the test.
I just, I I had to take this off for for all the SATs I took because it's just not, it's it's just the dangers of the phone sitting right next to us. And so it is, and I'm not saying to, you know, give you guys all the answers on how to go cheat on your tip. But when we are thinking about, yeah, no kidding, you know, no kidding.
It is distracting. I mean, I. Notifications because I I started to realize, wait, you're getting tapped all day, even if you're not looking at your phone, you're getting tapped every time one of these crazy. And they're not always taxed, like they're gain notifications and whatnot. So.
And it actually, there's an endorphin rush.
Yeah.
And you get conditioned to that endorphin. And this is, this is in.
Is that in that Center for the Human?
It's a very good research.
I'll give you guys homework.
Recommend the Social Dilemma, the movie, The Social Dilemma. It's very, very useful movie for understanding the.
The chat on Netflix?
I think it's on Netflix, but it's done by the Center for Media Jones, a couple of other groups. It's The Social Dilemma. It's basically from a group of people that worked in another. Well, it gives you an idea.
Let's keep going, people. We talked about cell phones a lot. Tony, last quick comment.
As quick as I can. And saying nothing about the legitimacy or whether it's a good idea or not. I certainly, Jay, you bring up great points as well, agenda. My issue is, again, that we have a personal electronics. Policy. We have a process for updating. We've reviewed it within the past year or two. We have a process for updating our policies. If things are coming up that say that that policy is not broad enough or it's not, then we need to look at it. We need to read it. We need to discuss it. We need to debate it. It shouldn't be easy to just start taking the kids' stuff away that they're able to bring in. It should be difficult. It should require these conversations. And and I guess I'm just a little bit worried when we start making those sweeping changes without taking it through a policy. We've got a personal electronic policy that talks about you're not allowed to bring your beeper to class. But it doesn't say anything about a cellphone. If we're going to start doing this stuff, it should. I also want to look in, talk to, you know, from the committee chair's perspectives. We have these policies that cover your, you know, one thousand coverage communication. If you are approaching or you're discussing stuff that might touch it, invite us in, let's align our meetings so that we have. A pot, we cover that policy the same month that you're covering your stuff. So we can make these changes quicker. They don't have to be separate. We can do this together. But again, I worry when we start making changes that don't.
I think we're good. Let's continue on. Any other committee reports? And you're wanting to change the communications, correct?
We canceled Monday's meeting, this coming Monday's meeting. So we pick up next month and we'll finish our discussion, play out some interesting meetings. I can give you a quick PTO on it.
I mean, the fun day.
Fun day was great. So that's Tep To. They had, all the kids had a lot of fun, of course. And then they've got the school supply box fingers where the deadline is July first. And then for the middle school, they had graduation tonight. The great dance was last week and was a good time and very successful. They're looking to fill three seats because so many of the members are moving on. And then from high school, same thing. They're building up their new board. They've got the golf tournament on Sunday, September twenty fifth, and they just keep asking, they need golfers, they need sponsors, and they need raffle.
Anyone that I'm missing, we're on a report.
We have policy. We had some schedule conflicts. The mental health and substance abuse task force. I know, yes, we were going to check in on the post pension.
I couldn't remember exactly what Rita had to hold it. But I had sent an email to Dr. Willitt about that. I had gotten a brief chance to look over that. You have a short answer to that. Yes, we do have a post pension process and we do also have a. Price extraction team.
Each of those situations is sad.
Yes.
You know, so they adapt to the situation. Which has had its own characteristics.
Yeah, there was a question that came up during our task force meeting on Monday that is a good one.
Yeah. Thank you for asking. I think otherwise, we're kind of in a. Holding pattern kind of state right now, working on drafting some new stuff. So there hasn't been a whole lot that I can think of that has been acted on the past couple of weeks.
Anyone else at this time? We're not forgetting anyone. Negotiations, you can say you're not, you can say that or not, not whatever.
We, yeah, I can't remember between last and this. We, we're in.
You guys met at some point.
We're in process and we're starting with the teachers and the admin on July.
There you go. Great, great update. Okay, as long as I have everybody, then I will close that out. My chairperson, for I honestly just wanted to say congratulations to the graduates of all levels, whether you're moving on up to first growth, TIS, TIS, to the middle school. Middle school to high school and high school on to every year teacher. I'm just, you know, all the students really persevered through the year. I feel like this at least had some sense of normalcy to the year. So that was really nice to know that COVID, remote nerving, you just feel. Little sigh of relief that there's some normalcy around the corner. But I just want to remind everyone to just make sure that you have rest and relaxation during the summer break and make sure you stay safe and healthy. Graduation time, it's exciting, right? And this is why I love being on the board. It's all those smiles, it's the best bumps, it's, you know, seeing. Kids at their best of their moments because maybe they had a real tough year and yet. They got their, one kid was looking, okay, I'm like, did you get the right name? I did this. And I think that is fantastic.
The middle schoolers are so cute because they come into sixth grade and they have the elementary school mentality, like, you know, all, everyone's rock star who's an adult. And they get to eighth grade, they still love everyone, but they got the kind of teenage angst thing. So the sixth grader will be like, you know. And the eighth grader will be like, what up? And it's all, you know, the same kind of love, it's just different kind of expression. Those few that keep that energy from six to eight will keep that energy from nine to twelve as well. And it's, it's, you're completely spot on that. And I had a twelve, graduation on Friday, it's tears now.
I, I. I absolutely love, that is one of the things I absolutely love doing is going to the graduation. I mean, that is just, those smiles. Just getting their name on. They, they look, they hold that and it's like, no one's ripping that out of my hands. And it's like, it's a full new start to my life. You know, it really is. You know, you're closing a chapter, but you're opening up a whole new door and you, so many opportunities are out there. And I just love seeing what our graduates do. It's amazing. So I'm really sad. I'm gonna miss this. Okay, um, public participation. So let's open this up on Dr. Willitt. Oh, board action, that's right. L one, sorry. So let's do the surf plus. Okay, so the L one, let's do these.
I'll move to move to declare the below items as obsolete and turn the items over to the town in accordance with the Board of Education, all see thirty forty.
Any further discussion?
Could we send something to the town? And this might be a good opportunity. Mine was. Mr. Murray's conversation, their conversation earlier, just to track. You know, this list, what happened to the equipment, where the next dash, where did they go?
Man, I can give you a little.
Good question. When does, um?
I mean, every single one of these items, they will, but I can generalize. Kind of a day in the life that we can watch for this.
Kind of a day in the life, people watch where this go, to know how to give it a better idea.
When does Mr. Foley actually begin? On Monday. So I can send an email on Monday.
Right, he won't be receiving anything on Monday.
This might actually be a welcome.
Oh, welcome, welcome. I'd like to have a listing of. You sent the, what we sent to the town and you want to know about how much what we get or how it gets trapped.
Where it goes, you know, it just goes to the scrapyard if it goes, you know. Because I can bring it to the people that we can get.
It would be interesting to know.
I'll report that to you.
Okay, so Scruggs, I will answer the name of. That would be interesting. Okay, any other further discussion before we vote? Everybody looks like they're ready to vote. Okay, so all those in favor can say aye. I said that was unanimous as well. So now, we'll go on to the public participation for the two minutes. If anyone on the line would like to raise their hand. Which I guess Katie, Bella, you're the only one here. So if you would like to raise your hand, um, please do so now.
Can't, I'm getting the thing ready. It's first.
She said all set.
So she said all set. So saying that that was the only participant that we have online, so we will close this out. Another points of information, if anyone would like to take this opportunity to say anything else.
I'll just say. I'm going to reopen the whole thing, but I just want to say. Tony, I'm happy to, you know, be of assistance in any way with that discussion regarding cell phones and they want to look towards making it a policy and. Have you talked with Doc that over to Dr. Milamore, but whatever I can do to help, I'm happy to do so.
Likewise. Along that vein, I just want to reiterate again to the committee chairs. And that, you know, each time we cycle, we get the committee chairs and help you to really look at those policies. Not just that one, but Jen, we've been itching to take a look at that communications. Yes, for the years. So if you, if your committee has time, I'd love to get that.
Okay, well, being that we are all set, I will.
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor can say aye. Perfect. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.